We're in order.
Okay.
Motion to go executive session.
On favor going in, do you have a special question by state and I?
Aye.
My executive session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor coming out of executive session, special question by state and I?
Aye.
On favor special question next. And now we're going to certify the executive session. The certification of the executive session. Whereas the Tasswell Town Council convened an executive session on this date to a affirmative authority vote and any sources to the provisions of the Virginia Program of Information Act. And whereas 2.1-344.1 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the council that such executive session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore via resolve, the Tasswell Town Council hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from minimum media requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive session to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the vote convening the executive session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Tasswell Town Council. So I need a roll call vote. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fox.
Aye.
Councilmember Beasley.
Aye.
Councilmember Hankins.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Aye.
All right, so we've certified the executive session. So next, I'm sorry that we're late, but I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance in case.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Nate, if you would just make a catch, please.
Sure. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much that we can gather tonight, that the weather has cleared up enough for a meeting. We thank you for those that are serving, those who are here to participate, and just ask you to bless this meeting, that it be productive and peaceful. In Jesus' name, amen.
So first on the agenda, special presentation request. We have the historic Crab Orchard Museum report request. Cynthia Farmer, the executive director of the museum.
I'm right here.
Hi, could you come up and give us a little spiel on what's...
Sure. I almost lost my view of the general literature, so I got a little more information about the museum. Okay. Now, what I have gave you, one, is just a membership brochure. It's a matter of books that's seen before. It's not that simple. And if you do not know anything about Crab Orchard Museum, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The museum was incorporated in 1978 and opened the doors in 1982, so it's been a longstanding, productive organization at Tasswell County. Now, we are membership owned, thus that's why I gave you this membership brochure. Any council members who are not members, I encourage you to please look into us because we need your support. We're also governed by 15 member board of directors. So I'm here tonight to just ask that the town consider giving us a small donation. Our income is generated from operations of the museum. And our largest event that works us almost is, it goes over for six weeks. And that is, you probably all heard of Crab Orchard, corn maze and pumpkin patch. And that's our biggest generator of income. And it really supports the museum in a lot of ways. 60% of our income comes from our operations and events such as this corn maze. And the other 40% is from donations and support from the community and from our membership, from sponsorships, from all these events that we do, and the ways that we can have a connection with businesses and promote them when they promote us. But two things I want the town to remember is we do two free events each year, and we'd like to continue to do that. And that is our Independence Day celebration. Everyone comes out and enjoys the day. It's always on the force, we never take that day off. So my four-member staff are working that holiday as well. So I'd like you to consider that. And also our frontier Christmas, which is always such a lovely event, unless it's so good and cold. This year it was a little bit nippy, but we still have good crowd even with the cold, cold temperatures. But some of the things, just so that you can remind you of the things that we do, we have our fiddler's convention. And I'm gonna give you these events kind of in order of how they generate income, starting with the corn maze. And then we have our fiddler's convention, which is very popular. And that's right at 20 years now with the fiddler's convention. And our membership, of course, we generate money from our membership. And we have a pioneer apprentice camp, which one or two of these children I think have enjoyed that as well.
They love it.
brought some of our creek mud home with them. But that's being children. And of course, we have pioneer school tours, that the public schools come and they come and they get a demonstration from costume interpreters, and they're actually showing pioneer living at its best, and it's a very educational experience for the kids. And that's something we need to continue. And to be honest, we're getting more that's coming from down around Abington and Bristol and up in West Virginia. So it's really, pioneer tours is still something, it's always gonna be something, especially with Virginia history being taught. A lot of the teachers love to come and reinforce a lot of that SOL material just before, that fourth or fifth grade SOL of Virginia history. But and then general admission to our museum, of course, would round out the top five as far as events and income generators. And like I said, we have rentals, we do weddings on site, we have the red barn that we did renovate and did what we could to make it a gathering place for the community. And we hope that a lot of people are enjoying that, and I hope a few more people will come. If anybody in here doesn't know, just look on crabwatchermuseum.com. If you've got an event coming up, we got the place for you. We got the barn, we got the picnic shelter, and just the grounds in general. And it's a really lovely place. But I just, in the past, the town has supported us, and that's, you know, I'm talking pre-COVID days, and we all know how south everything went then. But I have asked the town again to consider putting us back into the budget. And the town of Bluefield, I think, does 2,500 a year. And so I would respectfully ask that you at least consider matching that if you could. I'm working on a grant application with the town of Richlands, but I'm gonna hold out hope for it, not much. And that secret bluff I'm gonna revisit as well as soon as it does settles and the new management's in place. So maybe sometimes, I know Dr. Bigby was, came up to the pioneer camp, and he has a soft spot for us, so we may have a little luck with the town's secret bluff. Just looking for ways to support our budget. As you know, salaries are always gonna be up there as far as expenses and healthcare and utilities, especially A and B.
What about the town's economy?
And that's one of our top supporters, yes. That is their top supporter as far as donations. We do get it, we do give them, which they cut us last year, and I've been told to expect the same if not more. So we're working on our budget and having the this week, so as you see, while we're trying to identify everything we can. But our sponsors and that's the county and town support, like I said, the last couple of years it's only been town of Bluefield, so I'm grateful that they do continue to do that. And we're looking at ways to cut expenses, but we only have four full-time employees and four to five part-timers running our museum. And the other brochure I gave you is actually our grounds and our buildings, just for memory purposes, I believe a little bit. There may be that you can direct this, direct people to us, that would be great too, so that you understand. I can hardly even begin to imagine the vision that Mr. Jeff Hickenbottom and others, Nellie Bundy, had when they started this museum, and how they put those buildings together and made that pioneer park. It's really very ingenious if you think about it. And the fact that they were all original buildings that relocated to our grounds really makes it something special. So I think it's something that we need to foster and cherish and continue to support and take care of. So if anyone on the council have any questions for me.
How was your fundraising affected with the corn maze by the hurricane?
Well, we lost about $8,000 to $10,000 this year. We lost a week and a half of schools tours that could not come, and then even when they did get back in from Halloween, we had several that canceled because they said we just missed too much instructional time. As sad as it is, the kids don't get to take a trip. Don't feel tripped when we're hitting the books. So there was that, yeah.
I figured you had to take...
Yeah, we normally see about, on average for the last three years, we see about 2,500 kids. That's a long way to rise, and I'm a tractor driver.
Just for the corn maze, a lot?
Yes, yes, just in the corn maze. And then we see another 4,000 to 5,000 on the weekends that come into that corn maze. But the thing about the corn maze, so that you understand how we keep it true to our mission, it's always educational, and it's always history educational. This past year, we did a law cabin, and we talked about pioneer living, and we had one of our, we separate the children up into groups that's manageable, and we called those stations, and the kids would take them around, called ones on the tractor and others in the corn maze, others in the pumpkin patch, and on and on. But when we have big enough groups, we have to have more stations. So we even had our cow, I call it Bessie. She's made out of plywood, and she's black and white. She, our ex-maintenance man, he built her in such a way that there's a bucket inside of her that makes an udder, and the children get the experience of milk and a cow without the danger of being kicked or bit by one. So, but yeah, we did that with the children, but we make sure it's educational, because we have to stay true to our mission.
She did the corn maze and the pumpkin toss.
Yeah, yeah, pumpkin chomper.
How many kids go through the pioneer camp and the apprentice camp?
The apprentice camp, we're, well, we try to say 75 for apprentice camp, because that's about what's really manageable, but sometimes there's one or two that really won't come, and they've got a cousin or two that's busy, and you know. We end up with about 80 normally for the apprentice camp. We actually do a little pioneers, that's maybe just four to seven in June, but she tries to keep that around 30 as well, because they're a little smaller, and they only go the three days that we consider the full, full-blown week of the pioneer camp.
And one last one, do you have any idea how many people come to the fiddler's convention?
There's no true way to count that, but I would say this past year we had at least 800. We had our best fiddler's convention, and for 11 years that I've been in the museum this year. As far as, I mean, the music's always good, but I mean, as far as attendance goes, and it was still really hot, but a lot of people came out and braved that temperatures. But several years in the past, we've been threatened with a lot of rain, and I think that kept a lot of people. They're like, I don't wanna go spend that money, and then I get ranked out, or I don't wanna go sit through, you know. We get shut down for a few minutes with rain, and then we try to pick it back up, because a lot of our participants, especially the competitors, they've traveled from down in Carolinas even. So you try to keep it on the date scheduled for, but sometimes motivation makes that pretty hard to do, without returns especially.
When's the last time it measured? Almost 6,500.
I believe 2019.
And we quit 2019?
I believe.
They didn't have the corn maze and all that stuff, right?
I'm not sure of when they started.
Yeah, yeah, we were doing the corn maze, yeah. Well, this year, I mean, you're, we've been doing the corn maze 11 years as well, because, or 10 years. This is our 10th year, yeah. Plus I've been at the museum 11 years, but the first year of reenacting on those grounds is at the corn maze.
Given the number of people that come through there for the different events, I mean, we've not even talked about the normal visitors, but you know, we're talking about 6,500 people during the corn maze, you know, 80 kids, which means their parents are in town, you know, spending money. I've been at the frontier Christmas, and when the weather's good, it's packed.
It is, yeah.
You know, the number of people that you guys bring to this area, like you said, from West Virginia, from Abington, Bristol, that down that way, I'm gonna, I'd make a mention for $3,000.
I'll second.
All right, got a second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to give them five even. That way, since we gave them 6,500 back in 19, I think we get a kick right there for them.
How much do we have in our discretionary funds, that's all I'll say.
We have, you know, 17.
Because that's also a consideration.
Well, and my fault was, we gave 6,500 in 2019. I would like to be a little bit more regular with a donation, and maybe not do such a large donation. Something we can budget each year. Something we can be a little bit more manageable with.
You have a current of 16 for names for the rest of the, for the rest of the year?
How much did we give the cards? 1,200?
Card is a grant, so it's...
It's already in the budget.
Well, I believe it's, we get $1,500 and we match that, so we give a total of three.
So 15, and this is way more local, you're doubling. I think, I think as far as the donation request, it makes sense for group, for third.
A second.
You've already got a second, yes.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of approval of $3,000 donation to the Crab Orchard Museum, stay so by state and I? Little bit, stay so by state and I?
Thank you, council. And on a side note, not good minutes, but you know, I look forward to getting the membership applications in the house.
Thank you very much.
All right, and next on the agenda is the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable report request.
So Carol Doss, who was supposed to be here tonight, was unable to come, and she sent what she was supposed to say. I think Susan had laid it out for you all, if you all would like to follow along. So the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable has partnered with Airtown for many years on projects, and they're already planning for future work in our town. A few examples of projects that were funded in Tasswell by the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable. They did streambank stabilization and river restoration that improved the water quality of the Clinch River by reducing erosion at Dunkford Park, the Moose Lodge, and other sites. They also created educational signage for Dunkford, which is Dunkford Park, which is a town hall park. They had livestock stream exclusion that resulted in cleaner Clinch River through installation of fencing and alternative water sources in partnership with the Soil and Water Conservation District. They did first responder training. This was also in partnership with the Tasswell Soil and Water Conservation District. They did a workshop that helped citizens make rain barrels. They did a trash-to-treasure workshop. They did litter prevention for Tasswell. They've done Water Wizard Week, Kids in the Creek, Kids in the Clinch, a creeper camp at Dunkford Park. They are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and they are focused on improving water quality in the rivers in southwest Virginia. So she does have a little segment here. If you're wondering what other localities donate to the Roundtable, Washington County donates $1,000. The city of Norton donates $742, which is a very precise number, guys. Scott County is donating $1,000. Abington donates 500. The town of thoughtful donates 4,000, $400. And the Tasswell Soil and Water Conservation District donates 5,000.
500.
5,000, sorry.
Did she say what projects they have planned, that they have coming here?
She just said they're planning projects. I do know they do Kids in the Creek, and that's at Dunkford Park. I do know they do that trash-to-treasure, which is usually done at Nook's Hall. They had, they had an event, I don't know if it was done last year, but where people could bring like tires and things to Nook's Hall, like they partnered with the Soil and Water Conservation on that. So it does sound like they are involved here, although me personally, I didn't realize that they did that. So this was kind of educational for me also.
Are we sharing the event at Dunkford Park on the website?
I believe we do. Elizabeth Bennett has contacted me about it before.
I think Kids in the Creek actually goes through the school system, I think, too. It might actually go during the school day. Or they were supposed to. I've had it on my calendar.
They, I don't think they asked for a specific mail.
They did.
No.
So some of these trainings and things that they did were at Nook's Hall, too. So one of the things we're floating, like if you float anywhere from, I think we tried to float from Pop Shop all the way down to Past Covet's, but if they had a specific project where they were focused on the tires that are in the river, like Loveport or something like that, I'm just thinking it's a bit broad right now, not knowing what, what we're doing. I understand that they have a good mission and good calls, but I don't know exactly what we're doing for. That's just where I'm at. I mean, we're the headquarters of the Clinch, I mean, it's a beautiful river, especially when you get past Cleveland, you know, opens wide up. But that's something I would be curious and hearing more about, is what specifically we have planned for this year. Because your donation could be tailored to that. You know, if it's a bigger project, maybe they need more than just 250 bucks. But we don't have those specifics.
I'll have her reach out next.
So do we want to table it and tell?
No.
We find out specifics. Maybe she could come in February?
We can ask.
Yeah, I might, I'll sort that out.
Okay, next, the Small Business Administration Disaster Loan Assistance. Bruce Hill.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing this time to speak with y'all today. Once again, as mentioned, I'm the United States Small Business Administration. I'm a public affairs specialist, and I'm here with two other microworkers in the state of West Virginia and Virginia to provide information as far as disaster loan assistance is concerned. And of course, this is after tropical storm Kali. Now, speaking of two declarations that have been declared by the federal government, the first one is West Virginia Declaration 20768. Now, this will cover the counties of Virginia of Glad, Giles, and of course, Tasswell. One of the main focuses I want to emphasize today is that the application process for physical damage is ending on February the 7th. So kind of the urgency of me being here today. Now, as far as this declaration goes for West Virginia 20768, mainly focus on what is known as the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. Now, that work, as far as that is concerned, that's for working with capital loans to help small business, small agricultural cooperatives, small businesses engaged in agriculture, and most private nonprofit organizations of all sizes. As far as benefits are concerned, for this specific loan, the limit is up to $2 million for a leading economic injury caused by the disaster. So in latest terms, basically, just say you had restaurants, for example, and you lost electricity, you had all this inventory that went bad, and food that went bad, kind of covers those specific costs. Your business was down for a month, you couldn't operate. How are you paying your healthcare medkits for your specific plays? This specific loan helps in those types of things, and it helps in other areas as well, but I'll be brief on that. So that's essentially the first declaration. Again, this was focused specifically for West Virginia. Now, what about, the question is, okay, cool, what about Virginia? So for that specific, we have another declaration, and that one is number 20705. So that one's a little bit more, covers a little bit more than this one specifically for West Virginia, and that's why I mentioned it as well. The one for Virginia, of course, obviously covers Tasswell as well, but it also includes two other specific loans, and that would be the business physical disaster loans. And that was the date I mentioned earlier, February 7th. So of course, when we're talking about physical damage, you know, anything having to do with the building, inside and out, maybe a truck, or transportation, or tools that have been used, or whatever is involved with that specific business. It's also applied to homeowners as well, also helps out homeowners and renters to, well, for renters specifically, it would be more interior space, like you're renting a house from somebody, your nice 55-inch TV got damaged during Halloween, that would cover those types of things. And of course, if you're the homeowner, of course, it would cover, you know, the houses, or maybe a tree fell, or you know, whatever is involved in the land or property. So very briefly, that's the information I wanted to present. I'll be leaving this information here in my business car, and it sounds like I need to visit a museum as well pretty soon. So we'll be here until at least February 7th, and if you have any questions, I know we've been working in towns, both Virginia and West Virginia, a lot of these small towns, we've given bombarded with questions about these things, so please, if you get calls, just for those to be in the, if you take those off your plate, and we'll be happy to help you if you care. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Where are you located?
I am located in Princeton, Princeton, West Virginia. So it's about an hour from here. Yeah, and my other colleagues are in Princeton. So and then, of course, in Virginia, we were in Bristol, we were in, kind of pretty much all over the place.
Any more questions? Thank you. Next on the agenda is a special recognition for compassionate police department for Sergeant Layton, Officer Rubel, Officer Woodard, and Lieutenant.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to come before you. I've actually got a few other things to talk about. I've got these sort of folks here, they come in the first part, and I've got two that want to interview quick, their work tonight, but their new department, recently, Taylor Jennings, he just recently graduated November from the academy, so he comes, almost from Princeton, Western Michigan, or Bluefield, West Virginia. So he just recently got out, and also we have Sam McCollum. He came as a certified officer from Bluefield, Virginia. Sam lives right outside of the town limits across from the Gulf Coast. So thank you, guys, for coming.
And welcome.
It was nice to have certified people, and since I'm on that, we have another certified gentleman that just started today. He came from Bluefield. So Bluefield is not liking us right now, but he's certified as well, and I mean, today is his first day. I have one that just started the academy officially Monday, yesterday.
So you fully staff once you get these?
We are, I'm not gonna say the word, because it don't last long, if we all are. Couple of things, another thing is Sean Hurd, our accreditation office manager, for the first time, as far as we know, for casual police department history. Sean is, does our accreditation. Sean used to be an assessor, a master assessor, went across the entire state of Virginia. When he left, the last time, for a brief period, and came back, he didn't get recertified, so he's not an assessor anymore. But Todd Kleingold, from the Department... But Todd Clenningfield, from the Department of Criminal Justice, which is the program manager for the entire state, contacted me and said he would like to have Sean as part of his committee for the Bailey Act, which is the Virginia law enforcement. Something callous, and I can't remember what Bailey Act stands for, but anyways, it's for all the police officers and their accreditation managers comes together and does the true training for all of the agencies across the state of Virginia. He asked me if he could choose or nominate Sean to be on this committee for the police departments of 50 and under. Sean could not make it tonight. He had other obligations at the time I asked him, so he wasn't able to attend. But I want to give that shout out, that that is something to be said across the state of Virginia for casual police department, to be chosen and him not even be a certified assessor. So he is pretty much helping with the standards and the policies that tells each agency of what we need to do.
Can you come back next month?
I will ask him. We don't, we don't, we're posting on Facebook for him, but I will ask him if he can. And then, the last thing that I have is, I have actually, or actually, I have two more things. One is, we've done promotions, we were last. We had three positions. One was a uniform investigator, which is Dave McCollum. Dave comes with 26 years of service. He's worked in Smith County. He was, when we hired him on many years ago, I forgot how many years, three years ago now, two years ago, he was over at Marion Medical Health Hospital as interim chief there. And Chief Mills hired him on here. So Dave is now our uniform investigator, criminal investigator, which is Lieutenant Menifee's right-hand man now. And Lieutenant Menifee, Craig Menifee, is now permanent investigator for us. And he has more than enough on his plate. Matter of fact, I think, you know, it's council packets you saw, but our call volume is increasing. A lot of that is for community policing. I can't say that it's criminal calls whatsoever. A lot of it is associated with some of our community involvement that we're doing. So that's, that's a contribute as well. Then we have Sergeant Layton, that's been with us for 14, 14 years. He has been promoted as sergeant. Sergeant Layton has been the casual police department in his entire career for 14 years. Then we have Lieutenant Paul Little. Lieutenant Little has 28 years of service, and he was promoted maybe this lineup as well. So congratulations, John, and Dan Buck.
I'd like to see how long you can appear to.
Well, we will. We'll definitely do that. I've got, this one, this one is, was out of the ordinary. This was a mental health case that was here in the town of Tazewell. Officer Tyler Ruble and Sergeant Layton got this call on October the 20th. There's a firearm that was involved at that particular point. When they arrived on scene, the mother had got the firearm away from this gentleman. He had already fired the firearm before they arrived. Not at anyone, just shooting up in the air. So ultimately, he was what we thought was a mental health situation, and I'm still not convinced that it wasn't, but anyways, they do what they're supposed to do, and they took him to the hospital, and our community service board was contacting. They deemed that it was not a mental health situation. So therefore, it left us with no alternative, but they charged us nothing major, but he was confined in jail. He was later released, I think it was the 22nd of November by bail. The mother had, and the father wanted bail him out. He was home 14 hours from the time he was released. They receive another phone call of a firearm involved. And when they get there, this gentleman had already taken his life. And Officer Ruble, Sergeant Layton, the first time, had been very compassionate, and this is the father's words gone out of there. He came in the day of making the funeral arrangements. The gentleman had a crowd he was at the town of Tazewell Police Department of how, that they had been treated. And he wanted them recognized somehow or another. He proceeded to tell me that he felt that the second occasion that one of our police officers was supposed to have done that. His son didn't tell him this, but he says, by all means, there's no doubt in my mind that a police officer was supposed to have taken his life. But before they got there, he took his own life in front of his mother. So Missy Woodard stayed with the mother and consulted her and did the best she could with her. Lieutenant Menifee come out and done the investigation. And it was, of course, then, it was, he took his own life. But I just want to say that I'm so thankful that our officers didn't have to do that. And the first time that Officer Ruble went there, he told me he felt that that's what was being done on the first floor. And for the father to come in and tell me that after it occurred, that's, that says something. And I'm so glad that Officer Ruble's family sat in here of what he would have had to endure in his family if that was occurred, or any of those guys, other guys that sit behind me in the house, of what they would have had to work with. Sometimes we forget what our officers really have to go through. And how we get crucified sometimes, and thank goodness there's still good people in this world that that father come to express this. So I want to bring those four officers up, Officer Woodard and Officer Ruble, Sergeant Layton, and Lieutenant Menifee. And I want to present you all with a compassionate policing award from the Town Police Department for the exceptional work that you all did during a horrible time. And I want to thank you all for a great representation of self, this town, and working in the community. Also, work never goes unnoticed. Thank you all. And this came in the mail, and I have to do this one. This one ended in a good situation. This officer wanted to know this accident was given today, and I got it today. And Dave McCollum, I apologize, you don't have a certificate, but this is crazy and ironic how this happened. There was a pastor by the name of Wendy M. McMar was in an accident. And Officer McCollum, Investigator McCollum, was on his way home already off duty. She totaled her car, reporting to her letter. I haven't personally talked to her, but she would obviously total her car with the year. She was new. I think she put in her letter that she'd only been here a week, she didn't know the area, she didn't know anybody, she didn't know nothing here. And Officer, Investigator McCollum goes up, sees the accident, there was no one there except, I think, a pass driver had already called. I don't know if she was aware of that, but she had already called 911. She goes into her letter to say that how thankful she was that Investigator McCollum had stopped, and how that made her feel at ease. And he stayed with her, it's 10 degrees outside, her car was totaled, so he allowed her to stay in the vehicle till the trooper got there to work the accident out. And in her letter, it's very well, I don't want to read the entire thing, but it says, "Dave McCollum must be recognized for his compassion for some, for someone new to the area." And I'm like, oh my gosh, how ironic that I was recognized and these other four guys, you got recognized by a letter, and I apologize for not having your certificate. Sean, you don't went home by the time I found this in the mail, but I will have you a certificate, and thank you. Thank you. There's a lot of good things going on right now, guys. It's really awesome. We have great relations with all of our community partners, and we're really moving forward. And thank you all for giving us this opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for everything.
And one more thing, thank this lady and this gentleman for our shop with the Hebrew for what they did financially for us. Thank you all.
Guys, I'd like to, I want to come around and check this out. You're all amazing. I'll bring you one, Mr. Brown.
I was going to get a, I was going to get a half a.
Thank you all for allowing us.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Guys, I'll be safe out there.
Chris, I'll talk to you. All right, so next on their agenda is the Bluefield Area Little League Support Request, Manager Reagan.
I received an email from the Bluefield Area Little League, and this is in Bluefield, West Virginia. They have sent a donation request asking, not for a particular amount, they did have some needs. Defencing for the baseball field, upgrades to the United pages, updated equipment needs such as helmets, catcher's gear, softballs, baseball. And they have asked for a donation. Bluefield, West Virginia.
West Virginia.
I'd rather get you a little bit technical, pass. This is kind of late. It simply takes ten years. West Virginia, yeah. I'll go with, but I guess I'm off the little league here.
So, no action, or do we vote just watch?
We don't have to do anything.
Okay.
Yeah, well, unless somebody makes a motion, you know how it is.
We'll just let it drop.
Thank you.
Next, local business recognition on schedule. All right, so next item is the approval of the minutes for the council meeting on December 10th, 2024. I'm going to take a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes for the council meeting on December 10th, 2024, takes so by say nay? All opposed, takes so by say nay? Motion carries. Next, the approval of financial statements and a financial report for December 2024. I'm going to take a motion to approve.
Mother. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the financial statements and the financial report for December 2024, takes so by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, takes so by say nay? Right, the motion carries. Next, committee conference updates, Planning Commission Committee, Councilmember Davis.
All right, Planning Commission met last Monday. We had just a brief update on the Doctor's Office project that's going on beside.
Bubon.
Yeah, Bubon. But it wasn't an official update, it was just a brief what's going on, and it's supposed to be coming in next month, I believe, to give a full update. And then we also discussed adding definition of a shipping container into the code, and that has been referred up to council with a request to set a public hearing for February 11th at 7:15 to have a joint public hearing for the Shipping Container Ordinance Amendment.
You know, this person put that container in the backyard. She said it's just for, well, I approached and asked, is that going to be my girl forever? She said, no, it's just going to be a little move stuff.
That's why we done this definition like it is. It's temporary.
Well, and there's also been other people who didn't want to put in shipping containers as well.
I should, I'm just saying, she thinned the means, you know, she's supposed to be getting, from her.
Temporary.
Temporary job.
Thank you. Any other questions? So next on the agenda, unfinished business, we have none. Next, new business, Vice Mayor appointment. So we did a, did a vote, and we, it was Councilmember Beasley who will.
Would they make a motion to?
Look, I didn't say we made a motion, I said we voted. And I said, no, you didn't.
Yeah, make a motion to appoint Joe Beasley as Vice Mayor.
There we go.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of appointing Joe Beasley as Vice Mayor, takes so by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, takes so by say nay?
Aye.
All right, so still forward to two. So Councilmember Beasley, you are now the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
Next is the reappointment of Clerk Jessica Hayes.
Make a motion to reappoint the Clerk Jessica Hayes.
Second.
Any discussion?
None. There's no place.
All in favor of reappointing Jessica Hayes as Clerk, takes so by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, takes so by say nay? All right, moving right along. Next is the reappointment of Fire Chief John Thomas.
Make a motion for John Thomas.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Fire Chief John Thomas, takes so by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, takes so by say nay?
Thank you.
Lovely, thank you.
Thank you for what you can do.
So next is the reappointment of Town Attorney Brad Pyatt.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion on the issue.
All in favor of reappointing Brad Pyatt as Town Attorney, takes so by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, takes so by say nay?
Thank you. Enjoy this job. Thank you.
Next is the reappointment of our Town Manager, Leanne Reagan.
Make a motion to reappoint Leanne Reagan as the Town Manager.
I'll say it.
I'm taking that one, I can use the last one.
Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Town Manager Leanne Reagan, takes so by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, takes so by say nay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was a little nervous and was hoping it was just a type of, on my behalf. When I saw that, I was like, huh, I was like, all right.
Sam's always getting the axe.
Just got it.
Just got it.
Yeah, I know, I'm no guard.
So next on the agenda is a mileage extension request. Manager Reagan?
So as you all just graciously reappointed me as their manager, it is a requirement per our charter that town manager live within the town of Tassau. So I had a very unique opportunity that is presented to me. And I would like to ask for mileage extension. We, we had briefly discussed this previously and I would like to ask for five miles outside of the town. And I understand that if this would pass, we would have to have a public hearing. Is that correct? That's our first step?
We have to go through purposes and many of charter.
Okay. So the, the first step would be you all giving approval for this. However, we would have to set a public hearing and get any type of public comment. And after that, we would have to have votes and we would have to give attorney pack direction to change the charter, which would then have to be sent to general assembly. General assembly session is going on right now, so it will not make it to general assembly till next year. And we also discussed looking through our charter, looking through our code. Is there anything else that we would want to send at that time if we've already had submission?
Will you do your boundary adjustments simultaneously, right? Because it doesn't require charter.
No, that's not how you can do it though. The code or anything.
And even if, even if. Boundary adjustment title, we would still extend five miles beyond the new boundary.
Right. And you have to go through with the county and that usually has to be a joint presentation for a boundary adjustment. The meats and baps, we went through that, I don't think how many years ago it was that we had.
Twenty ten.
Twenty ten.
That was annexation.
And it's, yeah, and it's a lot of the same procedure. And the general assemblies, the minimum is that, it's not, it's anything, it's not rocket science to make it happen. It's just you've got to go through the various steps of advertisement, public hearing, making everyone aware with regards to to Leanne's. It would be one where she did that. Leanne's request and make the manager's request. It would just be a matter of with what she's requesting would be a simple change in the parameters for the town manager specifically and not a boundary adjustment type of question. So it would be much simpler to go about that one aspect of the charter as opposed to anything different. But yeah, a boundary adjustment or an annexation or those all require, of course, county and town joint input. So that's what.
I think I like a motion that we grant an extension for the town manager to live no more than five miles outside the town of Tassau. Is that?
Second.
I think you need to put first thing to get it together.
Can you motion that?
Did he, did he just motion?
He just did.
I look, I'm not getting all the information there.
Oh, no, but I'm talking about something different.
Yeah, I don't think so. Okay. Did it come in?
I was thinking.
To begin the process.
Right, yeah.
And I think that's one of the things I like looking, looking at. Very small towns across Virginia. Most recently, one of the ones I was looking at is like the town of Cannon, Virginia. But I think a lot of small localities are having similar issues regarding appropriate housing within, within the town limits. A lot of localities are looking at similar muscle movements to this in order to, one, recruit talent and ensure that their, their town manager has appropriate, just appropriate housing. So I think that this is not an anomaly. It's, it's something that's occurring across the Commonwealth and it's something that would be beneficial to our town manager in helping retention long term. And in a position such as this, long term retention is something that, that can ensure that our projects are completed, that there's continuity, that you have ability across your local government. So because it helps us out in all those departments, it's something that I could definitely be behind.
Like we previously said, I'd also like to look through and see whatever else, you know, may, we may deem needs changed similar to this, such as extending boundaries to where we can get more.
All right, Jeff. Go ahead. Go, go hold him. Get out your code book.
It's electronic.
It is electronic. You're right.
What I would suggest, and with your all's permission, do this is I would need really is what we're hearing from councilman Klein is to inquire with some of these other localities around the state to see what type of language exists in that charter to allow this. So we don't, I think the idea is to extend it would work, but we may, there may be a better way to do it to keep us from pigeonholing ourselves for future applicants. Now the town managers, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, things change. So if you all give me the attitude, I can look into that and see what might be. Just doing the five mile extension might do it. Maybe something that there's other managers that might be more suitable and better to accommodate what the needs might be at some point in time in the future, but we just can't proceed right now.
Good motion on that.
We do a second.
Start the process. Sorry, just start the process at this point. Can you give me that, like, two dollars to do?
So any more discussion?
And then it's going to be to present this to the general assembly in twenty, twenty twenty six session, yes. It would need to be presented to, and they like to have any type of charge changes up. I say upfront, that's one of the first things they address. It's usually low hanging fruit. Right. So we try to have, they want to have things by November first. They want to have the language crafted. They have to go through legislative services to make sure that they're, they think it's okay. So we did this, again, we did it back in ten. I think there's one time we did it. And I've done one other time I was called after Todd was here. Todd, Todd Davis, the manager, we did a charter change. It went through fairly seamlessly, but it was a matter, it just took time to get both housing and setting, get a sponsor on each side. We have to go through Doug at Moore Field and also the center. At work, their offices.
Okay, so the motion is to allow the process to start to allow Leanne to live up to five miles out. So we, so we've got a motion, a second. All in favor, take so by say nay.
Aye.
All opposed, take so by say nay.
Thank you all.
So next on the agenda is to set the public hearing for shipping container ordinance amendment for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025 at 7:15 PM. Any discussion? All in favor of studying the public hearing for shipping container ordinance amendment for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025 at 7:15 PM, take so by say nay.
Aye.
All opposed, take so by say nay.
And just to give you a heads up, there'll probably something come through the planning commission that'll be one step even beyond just the definite, all we're doing now is for the definition, but possibly then modifying the uses within certain business or industrial zones that allow for, that what's in place to continue. So we need to put some guardrails up for that, just to make sure then get the envelope on.
Understood. All right. So next, set the public hearing for water and sewer bonds for Route 460 project and wastewater treatment plant upgrade projects.
This was kind of a late submission to your package, so I apologize. Our bond counsel, Chris Culp, has said that if we are ready to move on our Route 460 and the wastewater treatment plant, we can have this public hearing and we can start getting the, the loan closings and the projects off the ground. So that's what this public hearing would be for. Oh, hey, the motion is set that public hearing.
Second.
We've got a second. Any discussion? All in favor of studying the public hearing for the water and sewer bonds for Route 460 project and wastewater treatment plant project, take so by say nay.
Aye.
All opposed, take so by say nay. All right. Next miscellaneous. I don't think I saw it.
Oh man, I have to work on a late submission.
Pretty easy though. She named that street.
What happened with Cameron getting that list?
I need a favor show on that.
Yeah. That's a good name.
This is the letter I got from Robert Rainey on Friday. I contacted him last week. The second page shows the map that's highlighted in pink that B and R Enterprise still owns. That is not part of the I E D A, is not part of Mr. Witt's property. It's not a town property. That pink area.
This is the Rainey one?
Rainey, uh huh.
Okay.
I turned it up against River Drive. The second, the last page shows what we want to buy in the pink. And what the Wits is going to purchase in the green. Pink areas, which, you know, public works are going out there to just live west of this pink area on the second page. And we get all that property there. We won't have to move nothing out that's already there. We got gravel piles there. Robert kept this area because he used to own the house upon the hill. And this area used to be all Rainey's, so he kept that for interest purposes. But he don't own it no more. The house on the hill, it belongs to the process and he don't need this anymore. So he's offered us for $1,500 and we did all the legal thing. I guess all in his direction from now to have Brad and general self process get us the pink area, which is on page, last page.
The pink area is this section right here.
And the Wits is gonna buy the green area in front of our house. So they don't even have to. B and R Enterprises.
Really?
So they're gonna buy the green area that we're buying the pink.
Okay.
And it's, you see the assessment on page one, way up there, he's on the old $1,500.
You said we had gravel piles there already, so that means.
You know, public works have moved out there, so they just give them enough room to do whatever they need.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? I want to make sure I understand the map correctly. Should we? No, I think I forgot it. Is that?
It's not oriented the same, but yeah.
Okay, oriented this way.
Yeah, that's right.
The green is northern end. I mean, the, yeah.
Since you have a motion saying what I would recommend you do is just basically give me the authority to look into, do the title exam, if you're interested, go move forward with the consideration of.
Still, still the thing I just worried about.
So I can then do a title exam. So I don't know, but it should be fine. If she gets pretty clear, she can send them right away. So you mean then the title exam, or the, or you'll see, and I can come back and give you that report. So yes, guys, it's good to go. Price or offer is fair.
So do we need to amend the?
No, I think what you've got is, is to clarify to.
The motion, motion to look in.
Motion to look in, to pursue. To pursue the acquisition of the property based on the terms they've offered pending attorney recommendation.
What he said?
So what he said.
So we've got a second. Any more questions? All in favor of, moving ahead and letting Brad look into titles and all that to potentially purchase this piece of property? Is that good? Say nay. Take so by say nay.
Aye.
All opposed, take so by say nay. All right. So, okay, so a little while, why, why is he keeping that one little? Is that done by someone different?
What, the green area?
It puts up to that, they're in that house. They have a house there. And it probably expands their yard, if you might guess that, Chris.
If you see the pink on the second page, the B and R Enterprises property line is at their front porch, right against their house. So he's offering it to the Wits, which is going up.
So it basically expands their yard.
It brings their front yard all the way to the new street that's going through there. And then we get everything that's in the green. They're paying about the same price. This is .63, .68, different. Six eight's total, almost a half.
You meant pink though, right?
Ours is pink.
Okay.
I should have went green for a whole time, but I don't have my mind on that.
He just painted her public works.
So next on the agenda, miscellaneous public comments. So next, council member comments.
I'd like to thank the fire department. John Thomas, you really have done a whole lot. And moving, these fire calls, the accidents, I mean, it was like every day. But y'all, y'all doing a heck of a job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys for New Year's.
New Year's was good.
Yeah, they were out, it was cold. They were out there. So that's very much appreciated.
Resting squad, the resting squad is going to get their building started. I'm looking at Brad out there.
So Thompson and Lynn are working with us on that project and they are drawing up plans and scopes of work that we can look at to try and rectify either that building and we, we have a potential offer that someone has approached us with to buy a piece of property and relocate.
We could, but you can't tell us the why.
I mean, I can. It's beside of CBS and their new police department. So I was approached by that landowner and said, would you like to buy our property for your EMS building?
No.
So what we've done is say, the condition that our EMS building is in, what would it take to get it fixed, updated, correct the issues there? And what would it cost to build it?
Have you heard of the rest of the squad? I'm not saying we don't need a new building, but I'm not buying that piece of property for the price he wants. What is it? Because you lose.
They are interested in tax credit.
Yeah, and it's been in cash too.
Oh, yeah. But we, we wanted to know which ways were feasible for us. There, there is a lot of areas up there that need to address. I'll be glad to go there with you one day if you want to go visit.
You don't have to tell me. I grew up here. I don't know.
Okay. So no problems for a couple of years. Is that what you're saying?
You buy the house across the street that Dr. Molina owns and you build it there, a condominium type building, just like they did it back at the drag. You can build it for $160 a square foot. Town employees can do half the work and save. And that is a big lot right there.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't know.
It's right across from where you're doing the trash. Doctor Molina sell that house a lot less than, and you, you.
Are we still, you still. Just back a little bit.
The other property is right beside Old Virginia Pharmacy. You talked to that man he got. That's where it really should be.
The property you're talking about is theirs.
He does that now.
Oh, the altar patrol and service.
They're in there two months out of the year.
They used, they used to be bad periods. Period property was.
Probably.
There's a pizza place.
I don't like the location out there beside the post. I don't like that lot. You don't have a good way to announce a good way out. You're gonna put the doctor off, so you got to figure out CBS.
But, but that's where we are on the EMS building.
The federal funding doesn't have a turn into a hunk in there. We have to use it.
I know that we talked and we did, just a different name. I can't remember that name right now. But I have been in constant communication with Royal Development. That's the funding agency that they are handling all the congressional grant commitment for that project. So they're, they're aware of where we're at, which I need to feel.
Can you hear my name? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for your involvement. It would be good.
Thank you.
Uh, they have no, I have no issues about the work. I did have one come up and made it tough. And I want to get into that one. Yeah, I, I, I thank them for what they did to come up and knock on my door. One of my sisters was really going downhill. I thank y'all for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Scared the daylight out of me, what's going on this time? So, anyway, I appreciate it. And is there any way we could, I don't know if you can do it, or not. If I go back out there now, I'm probably going to know a model by this time. How, we get some information to make contact with them on the, the ships. I don't want to all of them, but, you know, like the.
We can talk to them with their software numbers. That is paid by the town. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to have that if, if, if I can, to host. I don't know. They changed it, you guys, it's.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a revolving door. It's, it's a challenge to keep people. And when the mayor was asking me, are you full house? I don't want to say it, because it won't last. They just get numbered up.
It'd be somebody else.
It's a moving, it's a fluid, fluid target, drought. It's like herding cats.
So, we had a pretty good meeting last Tuesday where we were talking about plans for the upcoming year. And we know that we've got a comprehensive plan that's going to be due. Miss Leanne, do you know, like, what's the timeline on getting that product put together? Is it by the end of the year?
I think that we have to have a review done by the end of the year. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, does a comprehensive plan have to be approved through Plan Commission after all the updates and everything? So, I do believe it's the end of the year.
So, we've got this year as the timeline on?
That's what I believe. I will double check, but I think that's it, twenty twenty five.
Has everybody thought of your?
Right.
Yeah, I believe so. And one of the things, because we laid out a tentative plan, there's a rough draft where we've got items that we would like to tackle in town, equivalent orders, so that we can actually line them up and knock them down like dominos. One of the things I would like Council to consider is, you know, we're sitting on more than four million dollars in our upper money, and allocating budgets to these, these concepts so that they can actually become a reality. One, one in particular that I think we're pretty close to is the farmer's market. And Miss Leanne, where are they at on the engineering plans for the farmer's market?
We have signed the L M U. They have begun the work. We should have product at hand forty five days before signing the L M U. So, we'll have that plenty of time for our farmer's market grant with Tobacco Commission, which is February twenty seventh. And T Mobile grant is March thirty first, probably.
And T Mobile is fifty thousand?
Yes.
Just no match on that one?
I do believe no match.
Okay. And Tobacco Commission would be a match?
Yes. We can have in-service, on the in-time service to match a portion, a portion of it.
And we do, we'll in a couple of weeks.
We do.
We'll be driving that one.
Well, it would be helpful to have, maybe you want to wait on the engineering plans for that, but a designated budget for that project from Council prior to going in towards Tobacco Commission money.
Okay, so what the Thompson and Litten objective is, is they're doing a P A R, preliminary architectural report, which is going to give us that number. So, once we have that, we'll, we'll know better what to say, hey, we need X amount of dollars. So, do, do we need funds for matches and things? Yes, we do.
And then, on the Tobacco Commission, I guess, what, what's, what else is in your, your grant application stack? Are you, do you have that lined up after Tobacco Commission and T Mobile?
USDA, Appalachian Sustainability, C P P D, that is something just off the top of my head that, that we were going to be able to try for.
You, and these are all during this calendar year? And all the announcements for whether or not we receive a grant, those are within this calendar year? Okay. One of the things I'm afraid of on, on this project is, you know, we do get into the, I, I don't know. In my head, I've got it as maybe a five hundred thousand dollar project. And I could be wrong. I could be way off when, when we get the reports back. But there, this, this has been ongoing since, like, twenty twenty was when we made a motion to tear it down, and then it got tabled in, in, in the COVID mess. Because it's important to our taxes, because it's important to our farmer's market, who's going to be looking for, you know, a home this year. This is one of those where maybe we look at, maybe we get through this first, first cycle, but utilizing federal dollars through the Make and Rescue Act to get this project done timely, and hopefully this year is something that I would consider rather than spending two years on grants. So, it's just, just an opinion, but I think it's something we should be thinking about. For all the projects, laying out what we think a budget or item, breaking up the upper money to be utilized on each of those to get those projects rolling, there's a timeliness to where I think that it, it's the nature of government that it's just slow, but we do have capital to get our vision done. And we don't know exactly, you know, the total cost to these yet. But I think we should be thinking about what type of project we would be allocating to, to each of these priorities in order to get them done timely, because we're slow. So, that's it.
I did send out some requests today, just to, some of the community members that I thought might have an interest in our farmer's market, and I asked if they would be willing to write us a letter of support that we can put with our grant applications. So, I, I think those will be beneficial shortly after meeting binding.
Rescue squad, I ain't leaving you out. You're going to get a job, too. I'm trying to get that building straight up. I'd like to get that knocked down. Or move, wherever you want to move to, move to a location Danny was talking about. That'd be great. But your, your, your building's on your knee.
I'm making a motion with Jarn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of Jarn, states of by saying aye?
Aye.